The January 7th meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. We'd ask that you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Volkey will lead us tonight in the invocation.
Good evening. I'd like to invite Pastor Paul Raden from Hope Springs Community Church to come forward and lead us in the invocation this evening. He's my pastor and my friend. Pastor Paul, please lead us.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity and the honor of being here this evening. And I invite you to bow with me and pray according to your faith and your tradition. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this nation where we're free to worship as we desire, where we're free to pursue the purposes and dreams of our lives. We thank you for this great state of Maryland and for its people. We thank you for its place in our nation's history and that it's such an integral part of our country's legacy. We thank you for Anarundel County. We thank you for our waterways and wooded areas that reveal your glory. We thank you for our towns, our farmlands. We thank you for our families and businesses and schools and houses of worship that enrich and strengthen us and make this such a great place to live. We thank you for these leaders gathered here tonight, for calling them into this position of serving the people of our county. And Lord, would you grant them tonight clear insight and wisdom as they deliberate the issues before them? Would you guide them and strengthen them, we pray? It is in the name of Jesus that I pray. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and liberating, just as all.
Madam Secretary, could you please read the ethics statement?
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office Complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Now we have invitation audience. We will now invite a member to the audience who signed up for the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I will have call up six people to come up who signed up first. And I do want to make a statement. Our rules in the county council allow only you to allow speak on something that's not on the agenda. So if you're here to speak about Anarundel County's 287G program, you'll have to come back to the next meeting. If you want to talk in general, that's fine, but we're not going to allow something that's at the next meeting to have a public hearing be allowed. So I just want to make that clear. It's our council rules. So whether you're for or against, we want to hear everybody. But tonight, public participation, you can come and speak in general on any other topic. But if we have it on the agenda, which we will at the next meeting, you'll be able to come then. So let me call the first six up. Ms. Laura Kelman, Alexander Fakari, David Zewald, Rebecca Forte, David Dole, and Debbie And as they're getting seated, I ask that you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Alexander Fakari, 308 North Carolina Avenue, Pasadena, Maryland.
Okay. Well, actually, why don't we start with Laura Kelman? It was the first call, if you don't mind, sir.
Absolutely.
Laura, if you could start.
That's me. Thank you.
You may proceed. Name, address, two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Laura Kelman. I live in Cape St. Clair, Annapolis, Maryland. I am the descendant of immigrants, and I'm thankful for the immigrants in my county. I am thankful that with 287G gone, they will feel as safe as I do and that they will feel protected by the local police like I do. I am thankful that if they witness or are victims of a crime, they will feel comfortable reporting it to the police as I do. I know that this will make my community safer, and I know that immigrants make this county and country better. I know this will make my community safer. I also know that immigrants make this county and country better. Our American journey and our success would simply not be possible without the generations of immigrants who have come to our shores from every corner of the globe. I am thankful for those that have immigrated to this country. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Alexander Fakari?
Yes. As a resident, a business owner, a disabled veteran, and also a son of an immigrant, I just want to say that I hope that the county and our county executives correctly evaluate 287G for its benefits that it has for our county and that as a whole, there is looking at the MOA and the benefits that it can be.
We don't want, remember, that's part of legislation. You want to talk in general?
In general. I just hope that they thoroughly evaluate the document and consider speaking to all the officers and community members that are involved and how it affects everybody. As a member of this community, I have been affected by many things in this county, but the one thing that always stands up is thorough, thoughtful consideration of every role that's involved with making these decisions. And I ask that the county district members that as we move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Zewald?
Hi. Good evening. Good evening. Congratulations to all of you on your new role as county councilmen and women, and congratulations to you, Chairman, for being a chairman. I would just like to say I am opposed to the county executive's closure of the 287G program.
All right, sir. Can you just talk in general? Because again, that's part of the resolution.
I'm going to.
Okay.
Okay. I would just like to let everyone know that the benefits that are published about the program on the federal government website indicates that things like "by working together, local officials and federal officers can better identify and remove criminal aliens," which is a tremendous benefit to public safety. I also note that the Capital newspaper wrote a, did a research on this. It was published on December 14th, pointed out that there were 180 inmates that were reviewed. Of those, 64 had been charged with a crime and 36 had been charged with a violent crime.
Okay, sir. You're getting into specifics.
Yeah.
Again, I want to remind everybody, if you're talking about the program and the implementation in Anarundel County, that will be the next meeting.
All right.
You want to talk about the program in general, immigration? Fine, because that's not the topic. But the resolution was introduced today, and our rules allow it to basically be heard once. And it's going to happen, and then we're going to have it at the next meeting. So if you'd focus on that, I'd appreciate that.
All right. And then other benefits of the program are that, one of the biggest benefits of the program is that they are able to better identify individuals in custody. So I look forward to more discussion, and I'm sorry that the county executive decided to stop the program.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Forte?
Waiting for the clock. Okay. My name's Rebecca Forte. I live in Severna Park, Maryland, in Ms. Feeler's district. And I want to congratulate you all. I, bueno, yo tengo unos emociones muy fuertes sobre este programa, 287G. Es que mi abuela...
Speak English!
Ah, bueno.
She can't speak. She can speak whatever.
Please no outbursts from the crowd. Let her finish. If you could please avoid, excuse me, if you could avoid discussing the program, if you want to talk about it in general, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. My grandmother immigrated here from Germany as a Jewish immigrant fleeing Hitler two generations ago. So I am the descendant of immigrants. I am the descendant of a refugee of the Holocaust. And so I feel very strongly about how we treat the people in our community and how we treat those who are coming here looking for better opportunities. And I feel very strongly about treating people the way you want to be treated because my family got a second opportunity to literally not be killed and to come to a country that doesn't have any national language, because I'm a linguistics major and I know that for a fact. So, yeah. I want everyone to have that opportunity. I want everyone to have the opportunity to assimilate to this community and to be welcomed and to be able to go to their police and feel safe talking to their police officers, just like I've called the police before. Like, I feel safe talking to police officers. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is David Dole. I live in Severna Park, Maryland. I don't know how I'm going to follow up that. It's funny, I signed up outside and I, after I was actually signing it, I realized I'm signing to speak on the general and not on the program later. So I was racking my mind for half an hour back there trying to think of what I was going to say. When I first got involved in politics, a lot, well, after one of my first campaigns I did was on city council, and it was nice that you could discuss issues that were on the fiscal and they didn't have to do with social issues. And you see a lot less resentment from different groups of people based on, you know, just I'd like to say that not everybody who supports one side is racist and not everybody who's on the other side wants to harbor criminals. And maybe everybody in the audience should respect each other, because we're all human. Thanks.
Thank you. Debbie Jasson?
Hi. I'm Debbie Jasson. I live in Pasadena. I am in District 3. And I just want to say, I am opposed to any program that encourages the use of racial profiling and racial discrimination. I'm opposed to any programming that makes our county less safe by making anyone, including immigrants, whether documented or undocumented, feel concerned that they or others in their community may be deported if they come forward to talk to the police about crimes in their neighborhoods. I am opposed to any program that results from fear tactics about any members of our community, whether documented or undocumented. I'm opposed to fear tactics. There are people who came to this country because they were trying to escape from violence. And that violence is here in our community, and they cannot escape from that violence here in our community if they do not feel safe talking to the police. And they cannot feel safe under certain programs. I have more to say, but I think I sent in my email to you, Mr. Volkey. I would also like to say there's a lot of concern about sanctuary counties and cities and states. I live in Pasadena. Pasadena is a sanctuary for white supremacists. That is what we should be addressing.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. We'll take the next six. John Jasson, Nander Coey, Robert E. Smith, Brooke Shandelmeyer, Linda Curry, and Harry Freeman. And again, as they're coming forward, I would remind everyone, as you sit down, your name and address, and also stick to just general comments. Good evening. John Jasson? That's her.
After hearing from my wife, I don't know if I should just wave and go home.
Your name and address, sir, if you would, please first. Thank you.
John Jasson, Pasadena, Maryland, District 3. Good evening, Mr. Volkey. I am the great-grandson of immigrants. I am also the great-great-grandson of immigrants. We've got it all in my family tree. I've got people who came over fresh off the boat. We've got people that just went ahead and hopped over the border from Canada. We've got people that just got on a boat, hopped over the sea from the Caribbean, all sorts of wonderful things. So I am, what happens when you accept immigrants, American, just like most of the many of the other people in this room. And that's what's going to happen. And that's what's going to continue to happen. My Polish ancestors had to deal with the same type of opposition that our friends and families and neighbors who are of Hispanic descent have to do now. My Irish ancestors went through hell and got called horrible names and were discriminated against up and down the East Coast. And we see it again now from the children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren of the people who did it to my ancestors. So I would like to come before Anarundel County, before the council, and before anybody who will listen and say, "It stops here." In the name of my family, in the name of my ancestors, in the name of the Polish people, my family that were left behind when the Germans invaded and no longer exist, I say, "We stop it here and now."
Thank you. Nander Coey?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Narandar Singh Coey. I live at Americana Center in Anarundel County. I'm a member of Citizen Police Academy. I'm a member of National Republican Party, and I'm a member of Congressman in White House, Suggestion and Information Department. I'm a business owner also. I own a small shop, and I'm working very closely with all the law enforcement and civil people. I don't want to say any ethic, but I believe in one thing, that we are Americans and we need to save our country, and we need to stick together. There are a lot of things which need to be addressed. I will inform, and I will send report one by one. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Robert Smith?
Robert E. Smith. I live at 1487 Chatham Court in Crofton, Maryland. I just want to be, I'll be brief and just say that I echo the statements Mr. John Jasson just said. Beyond record, I'm here to support the immigrant community here and want to see their safety, but I'll defer my, I want to be counted as being somebody in opposition to this resolution, but I'll defer my comments until...
Thank you. Yeah, that's the next meeting. Thank you. Brooke Shandelmeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Brooks Shandelmeyer. I live at 66 Regatta Bay Court in Annapolis, Maryland. When I worked as a food server, there was a member of our kitchen staff who was mugged. His money was taken from him, and he did not go to the police. When I asked him why, he said he was more afraid of the police than he was afraid of the people who robbed him. So any program that would cause him to fear this is bad for law enforcement. And I think that when law enforcement says repealing of such programs would not have a negative impact on their duty, they should be left repealed. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Ms. Curry?
I'm not going to talk about any of that. The airport, Linda Curry, Severna Park, Maryland, a lot of Severna Park people here, came to let you know that the FAA did give us their presentation on the changes that they were going to suggest for Anarundel County and Howard County. I have a packet for you. The bottom line is, they didn't give anything to Anarundel County. The FAA decided that Anarundel County arrivals did not need any changes. We're going to be voting on that on the 15th at the next BWI roundtable meeting. And Ellen couldn't be here tonight, but we wanted to let you guys know so you could give us some input as to what we should be doing, since we represent you on that table. I have the letter that gives you a brief outline of the things that they did say they were going to correct. There are three panels that show you what those changes are. They plan to just make a small change to Howard County departures on runway 28, and then they're going to try and mimic dispersion instead of actually doing dispersion. And they're making some tweaks on the program that they feel need to be done but have nothing to do with what we've asked for. We asked for less concentrated flight paths, less noise, and to raise the altitudes. They didn't address any of that. Some of us on the table feel like we should take whatever we can get. Others feel like, once we do this, they're going to wash their hands of us and move on, and nothing will get done for Anarundel County. And the last two sheets, I want you to see, because you guys are all new to this. You've seen them. This sheet with the yellow was Anarundel County arrivals before they put in the Next Gen system. You can see that there's a lot of yellow all over the place, and they all end up meeting up on that yellow line to go to the airport. If you go to the next page, it's one solid red line. There are no flights coming in from all over. It's just one solid red line.
Thank you. For the benefit of the community and the council, Ms. Curry and Ms. Moss is our representative on the BWI roundtable for the flight plans. When they implemented the Next Gen flight patterns, everybody who lives near Lytham or Glen Burnie or surrounding area, we had some issues, and she's been representing us. I just want to thank you on behalf of the council.
Sure.
And if any of the council members would like to email with her, we do have that. We can follow up. But thank you again for representing us and hopefully...
Please do. We would really like to hear what your opinion is of this, and I know it's very simple, what I said, but I don't think anybody really wants to learn all the stuff we've had to learn the last year and a half on FAA jargon. So just give us a heads up on what you think we should be doing with this particular vote.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Mr. Freeman?
Hey. Good evening, everyone. I'm Harry Freeman. I live at 679 Powhatan Beach Road in Pasadena, Maryland. And I'm here to tell you a personal story about myself, one that not too many people outside of my direct family know. But my name doesn't give you too many clues about who I am. I am a first-generation American. Both of my biological parents are of Mexican descent, Mexican citizens. I was fortunate enough to be born in Miami, Florida. I was raised in Miami, Florida. And the man that adopted me, and I've known as my dad my entire life, he gave me the skills and molded me to be who I am today. And if it wasn't for the community I grew up in, which was overwhelmingly Hispanic, overwhelming number of immigrant families, first-generation Americans such as myself, we have grown up to be a very successful generation. We've grown up to be very successful people and stewards to our community. We carry the torch for our future. I have a son, and this county is where I chose to call home, not him. And I want to make sure that the home that he inherits is one that we can all be proud of. Now, pejoratively, you would call me an anchor baby. Some in here would happily call me an anchor baby. And that's not something that I take lightly. It's something that I'm proud of. And I'll save my official remarks for the 22nd, but I do want to say that I've served my country during a time of war. My family has done the same. Generations before me and generations after me of immigrants will do the same for our country, for our home, for our county, for everywhere in this country that we decide to call home. I leave it up to you, seven members of this council, to do what is right by yourselves, to do what's right for your families, for your neighbors, and for those who want to call this state home. And one more message is, nosotros inmigrantes estamos aquí y no vamos a ningún lado.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Mr. Wells, Ms. Frank, Mr. Snow, and Ms. White. And then we'll have, let's see, two extra seats if anybody else wanted to come and Once again, while the panel is sitting down, if you'd have your name and address. If you want to testify, just wait in maybe the front row here, because we'll get you up here quickly.
He was part of the signing.
Yeah. Mr. Snow was after Ms. Frank.
Somebody who's not signed up will have to wait in the next round. Thank you very much.
Okay. Let's start with Mr. Wells.
I'd like to talk about transparency. I know that Stewart and the executive branch are doing...
Can you give your name and address, sir?
I'm sorry. John Wells, 11 Tucker Street, Annapolis.
Thank you.
The executive branch is doing a great deal with all these committees and so forth to bring more transparency to the county. As citizen lobbyists, so to speak, many of us come to these meetings because this is a place we can talk to all of you at one time. But undershoe, there was no way to communicate, that I know of, with the executive branch. I'd like to see periodic meetings where we can have both council members and representatives from the executive branch in the same room to talk about issues and specifically to improve transparency. For example, and I'm not talking about 287G, but a program like that that's controversial could be, a standing working group could be set up to monitor that and report out to citizens and have occasional meetings. And there really isn't a mechanism for that that I can see in the way the county operates right now. So I encourage you to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Frank?
Hello. My name is Corinne Frank. I live at 8384 Lockwood Road in Pasadena. I would just like to ask everyone in the room, is there anyone here who is not descended from an immigrant? So we're all on the same page. Good to know. I would like to say that that does not mean that we do not, we suspend the process of good government. We do not suspend the processes of good government. Most recently, this new administration has chosen political agenda over good government. This administration has declared the taxpayer money will be used to fund representation for illegal immigrants.
Okay, ma'am, that's a part of the legislation.
That was actually not the program. That was a separate program.
I know, but that's also a part of the legislation.
Okay. It is budget season at the Board of Education. Superintendent Arlato has just proposed a $1.26 billion budget. As a parent, I would like to see any money that we have going towards schools, our school system, more teachers, and all of the things that are required to maintain a thriving school system. As a single-income family with two children, I expect more of my elected officials. I expect the money that we have that comes from our community to stay in our community. And I would like to say that I do not believe that this decision that was recently made by the county executive was putting our communities first. It was putting a political agenda first.
Thank you.
Tori Snow, 1307 Beltran Court, Odenton, Maryland. I would like to note that the chairman requested that there be no outbursts from the crowd and yet has not enforced his own request. Anyway, Mr. Chairman and members of the council, I would like to express my grave concern at the county executive's haste determination of a federal program. Per the county executive, a county employee made a unilateral decision to suspend activities related to this program without any direction that we know of around December 4th.
Mr. Snow, focus.
The agreement was formally terminated on December 27th, after which a report on the impacts of the program was released to the public. Now, the merits of the program itself are up for debate.
Mr. Snow, we have to focus on not talking about the resolution, and you're heading down that path. I'm going to give you your time, like everyone else. Please focus on not mentioning the county executive, because that's what's in the resolution. I mean, particularly.
It hasn't been published.
Go ahead. It's actually on the agenda. It is published today. It's right here.
May I have a quick second spot, please? Anyway, as reported in the Capital Gazette on December 18th, members of the Anarundel County Council were not aware that such a major decision was made. And even Councilman Chairman Pruski said that he didn't support the program, but he hoped to get more details on the program. I just wanted to point out that the council has a responsibility to act and to hold the administration accountable. Our concern does not relate necessarily to the program itself, but the fact that a county employee made a unilateral decision to do whatever, that there's nothing in the resolution I believe that's going to address...
Mr. Snow, you cannot talk about the resolutions. Your second warning. We can't talk about the resolution. That's the next meeting. You just said "resolution."
I used the word "resolution" in that.
Go ahead. Continue.
This has been a very disproportionate enforcement of the county rules. There were several people that did speak related to this program in general. You did not interrupt any of them, yet you interrupted every single person that spoke on this program. I think it's very clear where the agenda is. I think it's very clear what the council's intentions are, and I do hope that the members of the council do work hard to bring back the transparency that we all hope for so that we can all have an equal voice on this program. And at bare minimum, please publish tentative agendas on the calendar website so that people can assess whether an item is going to be up for discussion. None of us knew that there was a resolution, a piece of legislation going to be discussed. None of us have seen the text of this thing. Many of us have traveled 30, 40, even 50 minutes to come here and discuss this matter. Please, 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 take steps to make sure that the public is kept in the loop when decisions are being made of interest. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Tate? And I think this is good for the public. Whoever introduces a resolution or when it goes on the agenda, can we be clear about how that works? I just want to explain the process so people understand that when it's introduced.
It's introduced at 7:00, when the resolution is read into the record. That is when it's an official piece of legislation, is when it's read into the record per our agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. It was, Ms. White was the last one, and then if anybody wants to fill in after that, we'll just go through this. Go ahead, Ms. White.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the county council for this opportunity. My remarks concern procedure and accountability. However, they reference the program we're not supposed to talk about. So I think I will save my remarks until the next time when they're allowed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. List, if we could have the next group? Did you, are you on the list?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. If we have anyone else, so we can fill the seats, and then Ms. Gray will have you sign the sheet, but we need your name and address, and then we can begin. We'll start this way and go over, if that's okay. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chairman, councilwomen and councilmen. My name is Amy Cruz. I live in Annapolis, Maryland, resident of Anaronda County. And I also work for the American Civil Liberties Union of Maryland, the ACLU. I've been there for 18 years now. I'm very proud of the work that I do. And I have two comments to make tonight. One is generally about this process. I hope somebody will, I understand that we're following the rules, but if somebody would look at the rules and say this is a little peculiar, that there are some times when you can't, there's an entire topic that you can't talk about at all in an entire evening, so it doesn't fit in the public comment section, but then there isn't time when you introduce it. I understand this is a rule, so I just think that it's awkward that we're talking around something. But I do want to thank you very much for allowing the most amount of discussion that we can have, you know, without saying the words that people are talking about. One of the things I do with the ACLU is I run our Know Your Rights training program, and I go into communities and we talk about what your rights are when dealing with the police. And often, we partner with police departments and police officers to talk to communities about building better relationships. And I'm very excited about the prospects here in Anaronda County of rebuilding the trust and the relationships between various communities in Anaronda County and the police department, as well as dismantling white supremacy that unfortunately we've seen here in these chambers in the past, and I'm hearing it behind me to date. And I'm really looking forward to, and I'm seeing a lot of hope tonight, in rebuilding the trust and putting this county back together again. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to respond, though, because you brought up a legitimate point about the process and procedures. The reason why we have a public hearing with legislation, so it's a set date and this will be published after that, but as stated today, the resolution wasn't introduced till 7:00 p.m. Now, if a council member wants to share publicly that they're going to, you know, share and it will be published, that's fine, but that was not the case. So when it is the case and it's now public, that's why we announce a public hearing with that process. So I just wanted to make sure people understood that, whether pro-con or different. We want to hear everyone, and tonight, there were a lot of people that came, and that's why we had that. But we also do not want to discuss something that's on our agenda, because if we go down that path, we will be here till midnight from that path. So thank you. Next.
Hi. My name is Laura Day, and, oh, I'm sorry, I thought I was. And I live at 7739 Acrocomia Drive in Hanover. I am your constituent representative, Lacy. Thank you, or congratulations on your recent election, and thank you all for your service. I am a first-generation immigrant. I am the daughter and the spouse of naturalized citizens. We are very, very well-documented immigrants. However, I would like to reiterate comments that I've heard, that regardless of your status, that anti-foreign sentiments and anti-immigrant programs do not increase our trust and ability and confidence in the police. And I'm a member of the community. We volunteer, we participate, we contribute, and I would love to continue that, and I want to feel as safe as everyone else. And I want my father, I want my husband, I want my neighbors who are immigrants to also feel that level of safety that second, third, fourth generations do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yasmin?
My name is Yasmin Jamison, 214 St. Anton's Way, Arnold, Maryland. I'm going to really save what I was going to say for the 22nd, but I want to congratulate everybody, and I do want to say thank you to County Executive Pittman for the, what we're not supposed to say. But I want to just say that I'm an immigrant. I came here when, and I might cry, so, I came here when I was eight. And my mother was always scared of that. Even though we came here with our documents, whatever, I didn't see my dad for two years while he, you know, got our green cards. But even though we came here with all our documents, for all of my mom's life, she was always afraid of the police and attorneys and lawyers, because she always thought that they were, you know, something might happen and we'd be sent back. So it really breaks my heart that, you know, anybody would have to feel that way, living in our county where we're supposed to keep everybody equal, safe, justice for all. Anyway, I can't, thank you.
Thank you. Next, ma'am.
I'm Randy Williams, Shadyside, Maryland. My daughter's 16 years old, and she's Mayan Indian. She was born in Guatemala and adopted when she was 11 months old. She hasn't gotten her driver's license yet. She's scared of the police because she has dark skin, and she is the size of a Mayan Indian woman. So she's here, and she's safe, and they've stopped the adoption program in Guatemala. So all the children that are in the situation that my daughter was in are in missions or orphanages, where they're now being molested and abused, and they pretty much stopped the amount of money going to the country for the wonderful adoptions. And the children that are in the state adoptions are, in many cases, put out in the streets when they're very young. And the ones that are teenagers that stay in these orphanages are being sexually abused in many cases, or human trafficked when they are released. So I just want to let you know that the people coming into our country who are of the descent from the Latin American countries are not safe when they return to those countries. We need to protect all citizens regardless of their nationality. And I myself is the granddaughter of a Russian immigrant who came here in 1907 to escape the Jews that were being persecuted. So I hope that this county will embrace all of us and not single anybody out in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jim Doyle, 2909 Center Street. I'm the former president of Edgewater Beach Homos Association, and I'm here to speak to you about the need for a program from this county for septic-to-sewer conversions. I'm sending a packet of information with leads with vibro disease that's caused by nitrogen that's put into the bay, which causes bacterial plumes and is a public health risk to our entire community. That means boaters, that means crabbers, that means families that go to the bay to wade or swim. And I was a member of the septic conversion task force put together by the Department of Public Works in 2018, and we came out with some very strong recommendations which are going to be needed to be addressed by this council. The first was that the current rules are inadequate for getting any septic systems converted to sewers. We need a proactive group at the Department of Public Works, reaching out to the 30 communities identified by the Department of Health as at risk for septic-caused illness. The Department of Public Works has done a great job. In fact, they went forward and got a $3 million grant for our community from the Department of the Environment, but that's not going to cut the nut. Our front-foot assessments would add another 2, 3 million, but the project costs 15. Now, this council needs to come up with a program that would address this funding shortfall. So finally, we do something about getting septic systems, which are the primary cause of pollution in our bay right now. The point source solutions have been addressed. This is the issue that brings to this council. It's been years, sorry. Okay. So we need to address a funding solution which doesn't wait for a white knight like the federal government to come along with the clear water funds that got many of the homes associated, and gets a funding approach that's practical from Anaronda County.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Thank you. Yes, sir. Ms. Herr, sorry. We have a question.
Could I ask just a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Sir, thank you so much for coming. So I might understand that this third page in here, these 37 areas, these are all areas that have similar health concerns?
Correct. And they're not in priority ranking, they're in geographical ranking. The Health Department has not been able to prioritize them as yet.
Okay. And I believe there's about 100 homes where you are located.
140.
140, okay. You mentioned that there's some money from a grant, some money from your frontage assessments. Do you have any kind of thoughts on where the rest of the money could come from, or any kind of funding?
Yes. In fact, we've discussed this with Mr. Hammond, and he's got some ideas for you all. I discussed with Rock, whose last name I can't remember, who was the chief of staff for Mrs. Newman's administration. If you added $1.50 to everybody's water bill, you would create a reserve fund of $2 million annually that would allow the projects to go forward. And the people that have been already connected were the beneficiaries of subsidies that allowed them to get connected, including some that were 80 cents on a dollar. So those people in the enterprise fund for sewer and water are the right group. We don't need general revenue funds to do this. There's an enterprise fund for sewer and water, and those people could create reserve funds, which make loans to the projects which are repaid in out-years. There's an actuarially, I'm a business professor, there's an actuarially sound way to go about this with county resources within the enterprise fund, and it doesn't need to tax into general revenue. Mr. Hammond's a great guy, and he actually told me, you know, I could find you $6 million, but where should I take it from? You know, and so we don't need to have general revenue funds for this particular approach. There's an enterprise fund for sewer and public water that could be used to gain the reserves to get these communities finally, finally hooked up to sewer.
Last question. I think you've been trying to get sewer for quite some time, right? And there is currently sewer just across the street?
Yeah. We're a community that's low-hanging fruit. The Department of Public Works has identified Edgewater Beach because we are right along Route 2, and there's a pressure pipe that leads to a sewage treatment plant that has excess capacity, and where some of our neighbors actually butt up against the pipe. The only problem, it's a high-pressure pipe, and we need a pumping station in order to get our sewage from our homes into that particular pipe. That's a $5 million item all of its own, but it could be amortized as a system-wide enhancement. It doesn't have to be attributed to the individual product. Right now, every project has to be a standalone, pay-for-itself from the homeowners, and try to amortize $15 million over 140 homes, and you get a figure of $107,000 per home. I could buy a lot of septic tanks for $107,000. So it needs to be an affordable solution that comes with some, let's take all the grants, let's take all the loans, but there's got to be some reserve to make up differences when these communities get close to being able to be connected. And that's your job. You've got to come up with a funding mechanism that gets these projects over the top.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. We appreciate your expertise. I guess you all know that Ms. Herr is a civil engineer, and we've been very grateful for her office and understanding these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. I want to give the gentleman an opportunity.
Sure.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Volkey has a question.
Thank you. I'll be quick. Sir, thank you for coming down here, Mr. Doyle, and I notice a lot of these projects are in my district. I see a lot of communities I recognize.
It's county-wide.
Do you have a sense of what it would cost overall for what you're talking about for all of these projects? What's the total number?
Well, there's 5,000 homes identified by the septic task force, which I was a member of, okay? And some will never be connected. If you have three homes on an island, we can't put a pipe to you, okay? So it needs to be prioritized, which communities are close to existing facilities, which could be connected at the most reasonable house, cost per household, and that's not been done. In fact, there's been no monitoring by the Health Department. The only way to monitor is to put a television scope into your septic tank and see if it's failing, or dig it up. And no one is monitoring this. If you don't mind, Chairman, I would just like to, one minute, to tell you what...
How about 30 seconds?
30 seconds. I wasn't involved with this project until a neighbor two doors down from me passed away, and when her house transferred, they tried to find her septic system. There was none. It was a rust stain from a tank that was 40 years old. She was putting raw sewage into our neighborhood, and we have wells. My well was 60 feet from this lady's raw sewage pipe. This is a third-world issue, which our county is not addressing, and it's an economic issue for the entire county. As a business professor, I would tell you, we don't publicize, I've been above the fold in the Capitol complaining about this. We don't do ourselves any good by publicizing this any further. We need a program to get solutions.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Any other questions from the council? Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Ken Mark. I'm actually the president of the Edgewater Beach community, and I'm seeking on, sort of tying into what Jim was just saying. So the third exhibit that you see, since 1965, we've been putting out petitions to the council, to the county, to try and get attached to the sewer system that we basically paid into this whole time. So it runs right by us, and we're just sitting there, and our septic systems are starting to break down, we're starting to put nitrates into the actual watershed, which affects the whole Chesapeake area. So we've been petitioning now for over 50 years, trying to get attached to the sewer system that we paid into and we're hoping to get attached to, but to no avail. And it's starting to sort of tear the community apart a little bit, because you have many people that sort of given up hope, and other people who are still gung-ho about trying to get attached. So petitions just aren't the way to go anymore. So I kind of like to piggyback off of what Jim was saying, that there has to be another solution, another viable, affordable way that this community can get attached to the sewer system that runs right by us, that we paid into and we've been trying to get attached to for 50 years. And $107,000 is just not viable for a lot of these fixed-income families that are there. A lot of these families have lived there their whole lives. A lot of them in their 70s are on fixed incomes. So what we need to do is we need to think of a system that can get us into this sewer system that we paid for in a way that is economical for everybody and basically saves the environment. Because the sewer, like Jim was saying, one of the septic tanks was just completely gone. We don't know what's there. So it could be in our drinking water, kind of the first pictures he showed you, where the nitrates get into the water, they create a lot of diseases, a lot of health concerns. So it's not just our community's concern anymore, it's become more of a whole Chesapeake area concern.
Thank you. This panel's dismissed. And anyone else for public participation? This will be the last call. If you'd come up to the seats, thank you. Once again, last call. As a reminder, your name and address in two minutes. You may start, ma'am, we'll go starting that way. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sandy Shin. I live at 2078 Ingleside Court in Crofton, Maryland. I just wanted to weigh in on the way our county, our state is looking at immigration. Like everyone else in this room, I'm an immigrant. Actually, I would be considered like 1.5. But all the energy and the intellect and the grit that immigrants bring to this country, it's worth a lot. It's what differentiates us from a lot of other countries, even my home... home country that, you know, my family is from, Korea. It's not the open, dynamic society that you have here in Anarondale County, in Maryland, in the United States. So, in all of this discussion about immigration, please don't close off your minds and hearts to all the really great things that the vast majority of immigrants bring to this country. And so, I just ask that people be respectful when they have the discussion, and that when there are discussions about difficult issues, that there is transparency. And I hear a lot of people on different sides, because I know I was here when County Executive Schu was here and making decisions. You know, I was very frustrated because there was no public hearing on this. There was no opportunity for input. So, even people who may have a different viewpoint from me, I can understand that frustration, because that was the frustration I had last year when similar discussions were going on. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Julia Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I'm totally derailed, because with the discussion, I was going to talk about the sexual recession that was reported in the Atlantic Monthly magazine, because there was a major program sponsored by the Atlantic Magazine that was addressing the issue of loneliness, which extends from the youngest to the oldest in our community. It is a huge health problem, because when people are lonely, their immune system declines, they're subject to all kinds of additional diseases. But the gentleman in front of me started talking about septic ways to getting into the rivers. And poor Mr. Pruski has heard this before. But you see, I have a neighbor whose septic system is too close to my property line. It violates the, you know, state and county setback requirements, and that there's this pipe from two intakes on Ridgely Avenue, one on the east side and one on the west side, and it comes under the street and crosses my neighbor's property until it gets to this septic, excuse me, drywall that was installed. Now, all I had was the documents he filed when he put in the tank, and the documents he filed, and this is total, you know, this is total off the top of my head, but at any rate, so it's not well organized. Anyway, the pipe, according to his drawings, the pipe passes, you know, right over this drywall and goes on downhill. But I've known, and I've complained for a long time, someplace in there, that pipe, you know, takes a dog leg or turns, and it discharges on my property. And it is not good to have stormwater discharged on your property, because if you took, you know, hydrodynamics and stuff, when you turn the water, you know, the water's going, whatever speed it is when it's going, when it's flowing, but when you turn it.
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson.
It churns, and it causes serious erosion. And so, I am a source of erosion into Wings Creek, and I need your help. So, I will talk to you more another night, and I'm really sorry to be off the major topics.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next.
Hi, Erin Edwards, Millhaven Court in Edgewater. I had no intention of speaking this evening, but as I sat here, it occurred to me that most of you were elected because of the public's unhappiness with the previous administration and some of the programs that the county was participating in. And you're here on the council now because people want to change. They're demanding a change. And we're really, I think, as residents, looking forward to having a very productive relationship with the council and the county executive, and kind of reverting back to some of these old programs is probably not the best way to go about fostering that relationship. And I would like to see, I'd like to see everybody get along. And that was all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Michael Gendell. I live on Riverside Drive in High Point, which is on Stony Creek in Pasadena, or the Deena, as we call it. There are two words, sectarian and separation. They both begin with S. There's another Ian word, egalitarian. You know, Anarondale County is really an egalitarian county. We have many colors of people, many religions represented here. And I've been to the previous set of folks' meetings, and for many reasons, I take umbrage at opening in the name of Jesus Christ. I am not a Christian. I'm Jewish. At the very least, as an inclusive thing, and a lot of my friends are Episcopal's, Presbyterian's, and I love them all, but in this public setting, you're representing the egalitarian interests of every person here. And when you single out a particular deity, you may not realize it, but it is, I don't know the exact adjective, to those who don't go to church on Sunday. At the very least, could you consider amongst yourselves, or whatever process you have, opening with perhaps a moment of silence, so each person's deity can look upon the proceedings in a, oops, in a silent kind of way. I could, I could go into why that is very quickly.
Let him finish his statement, please.
We're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This panel's dismissed. The invitation audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda? May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution amendment to a bill, or resolution or minutes constitute the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, the motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of December 17, 2018.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Andrew Pruski at 7:00 p.m. and opened with the invocation given by Pastor J. Offer, Harvest Crusade Ministries' Glenn Burney, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 17, 2018?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions. Motion carries. Minutes of December 17, 2018. Stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 119, An Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development: Adequate Public School Facilities School Utilization Chart. Bill Number 219, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Subdivision and Development: Fees and Security School Impact Fee Districts.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 119, Resolution Requesting the County Executive to Enter Into An Agreement With the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement on behalf of Anarondale County to Perform Certain Immigration Enforcement Functions Pursuant to Section 287-G of the Immigration and Nationality Act. Resolution Number 219, Resolution Urging the County Executive Not to Use Funds Received by Anarondale County from the Federal Government Pursuant to an Intergovernmental Service Agreement for the Legal Representation of County Detainees in Civil Proceedings Instituted by the Department of Homeland Security, and Pledging Not to Approve Any Related Budgetary Requests.
Okay. Is there any other business to be brought before the council? Any members?
Mr. Pruski.
Yes, Ms. Rabin. Yes.
This is related to a comment earlier in the evening.
Let's get your microphone, if we would.
Thank you.
There was some questions about transparency and items on the agenda. I just want to point out that transparency, I believe, it's very important to me, and I can't speak on behalf of the whole council, but this is very, a very important matter to me, and that raises the question, or the issue of notice. And when the public is given notice about an issue, or a topic to be presented at a meeting, and the resolutions that were just read, that is the notice. So, that will be the opportunity to say, these will be placed on the calendar in the future. And so, that is the notice, and I hope that that helps clarify the process.
Thank you, Ms. Rabin. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. The county council is now adjourned till Tuesday, January 22, 2019. Thank you.